How's it going, Kataning? Welcome to the Greatest City in the World Podcast. I am here with a new friend, Ashley McIntyre. Am I saying that correctly?
Absolutely, yes, thank you.
And she's running for District Three School Board.
Yes.
For Armstrong, Armstrong School District. I had, I normally have just done commissioner interviews, I've done, but I've never done a school board once. So you're actually the very first.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, very exciting, right?
Hopefully, this is some good content and this is a good first interview. I have a feeling with the positivity on your end that I'm hoping it rubs off quite a bit on me. You know, I'm a positive person. I think it's gonna be good.
It'll be very good. And I think it's very important, too. We've noticed over the past few years especially, school board meetings, if you've been watching social media, those kinds of things. School boards have become very vibrant places of discussion, mostly in kind of the negative route, but there's a lot, been a lot of pushback where there's kind of, it seems like there's a separation between kind of entrenched school district mentality and regular people. And that gap seems to be getting wider. And so I had someone, actually, you didn't approach me, but someone else approached me and said, I should interview you. And actually have a couple more school board people coming, school board candidates coming later today. So we'll have some different views on where we're headed as Armstrong School District. And hopefully people can get to know you. And if they connect with your heart on the issues, then they'll consider voting for you in District Three.
I would love that.
So, tell me a little bit about you. You know, who are you? How did you come to this point? Like, what, what made you get to, get to this place?
So first, I would like to thank you again for having me on your show.
Oh, definitely.
Greatest City in the World.
Yeah.
I love it. My name is Ashley McIntyre and I pride myself in being a mother of two fantastic children, ages seven and four. I'm a wife to a great, great husband and I am a citizen of Armstrong, basically, and a healthcare professional last. So I'm very family oriented and I do a lot for my community as well. I am a volunteer. So I do some volunteer work for our church, Mount Zion in Gertie. I do a lot for our local PTA. So I see a lot of different needs or just different takes, just from a volunteer standpoint.
Sure.
So those are the things that I do. And anything else you ask me, what, what do I really like to do or?
Yeah. Yeah, like, so what kind of, what kind of drives you? What's your, what's your passion?
My passion is to leave things better than what I found it. I am a fixer. Or if not a fixer, I'm just a, a person who is always looking to better something, to a fault, almost. So I do a lot of quality operations, too. Even in my professional work, I do a lot of quality assurance stuff. So it's quality matters to me. I, I'm always on the hunt to make things better.
Yeah, I'm the same way. And that's, it becomes like an obsession for me.
It is, it is.
And that's how I got to like doing blight and that kind of stuff. And it gets me in trouble sometimes, but.
It really can. But it becomes a passion in the sense that there is good and you can find it, you can get there. And you and I kind of discussed that before this, this interview. There's always good and there's always a way to turn things around if you, if you're not loving the way things are going.
Absolutely, yeah. And you do have, I saw you on Facebook after we became Facebook friends. It's like, you really do have a beautiful family and you can tell that you really do a lot of good stuff in your community. And so that's really exciting. So what specifically drew you to, to running for the school board? I mean, that's a, that's, not a lot of people think about it. It's not a, not a paid position. You're not gonna become rich and famous from it. Like, what, what led you to this point for running for District Three School Board?
So for me, I have two young children, as I mentioned before, I realize, you know, a few years ago when COVID kind of started, I think my daughter was obviously very young and she's the, the one in, in public school. I watched a lot of the decisions kind of being handed down and many people, including myself, we weren't, we weren't quite happy with them. And you, you spoke to the individuals on the school board and in each and every individual, they're great in their own way, great people in the community. But once you start talking to the individuals, you, you begin to realize that their hands were kind of tied. And you always wondered, could you do anything more? If maybe you were on the board, could there be a turning point? So that's kind of what I, I began. But full disclaimer, the individuals on the board now are great individuals. So this is, they're an asset, too. By the same token.
Yeah. So you were seeing things happen and then you said like their hands are tied as far as, is it like from a federal level, state level?
So from the state level. So we saw some, you know, specifically, let's talk about COVID specifically. We saw some, we could talk about masking specifically. I know this is kind of a hot topic. We're not gonna debate efficacy or anything like that here. But we are, what we are here to say is during that time, we saw some very specific orders come out from the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
Right.
The Pennsylvania Department of Education was actually issuing health orders, which didn't make an abundance of sense. And of course, you saw some litigation on that. And during that time, it was abundantly apparent that many people in the district did not want what was happening to happen, namely masking. But really, parents didn't have a say in it. It was kind of this edict that came down from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And if you didn't comply, I remember, you know, calling school board members and they were basically saying, we were advised that if we did not vote yes to this, this mandate, then we would have, have an issue with personal liability, which would be the, you know, that's like an unprecedented thing. And I'll never kind of forget that conversation because to me it was like, what? I mean, so many things just didn't make sense.
Yeah, it didn't make any sense at all.
It didn't make any sense at all that, you know, I, I started to dig, dig a little deeper and do my due diligence because I felt like I had to at that point. I will not tie my professional life into this, but I will say that I, I felt very strongly about a certain way that we could be doing more harm than good to our kids by just simply following the rule of the government and that, that the local or the state government. So that's kind of where I started to get involved. And you see a lot of these school board meetings and parents, this is where parents get really angry. When you start feeling like the people making decisions aren't listening to you, or maybe they are listening, but they can't do the right thing because of other reasons. That's when you, you feel like you must get involved.
Yeah. So it's almost like a calling for you at this point. And from the sounds of it, like you're just like, hey, someone, someone's gotta, someone's gotta try.
Sure. I mean, it is definitely a calling. But I will say I've gotten involved with some great people locally, too, you being one of them. Once again, I do appreciate this interview. But there have been some really great people guiding me along this way. I didn't actually even want to pick up a petition this year. That, somebody kind of reached out to me and said, hey, can you, can you do this?
Yeah.
And it wasn't, you know, just a, a regular person. It was somebody with some influence and said, we'd really appreciate if you did this. And boy, some days I really I wouldn't say regret. Regret that decision, but I will say I, this, this is hard. This is, this is difficult for an unpaid position. You really have to have some type of vested interest. And this is where I'll kind of go into vested interests and what are your interests for being on the school board for, for any other candidate? And I have, I have several.
Yeah. So I, I, I can totally see where you're coming from, especially with the COVID stuff. And that's, I mean, to me, that seems like where everything started to really go off the rails and where people started to be like, wait a second, if this much could come down from the state, what else could come down? And that, that we would then have our hands completely tied on if we're not willing to kind of push back. And full disclosure, like my family, we homeschool, we've been homeschooling from before COVID. And we kind of saw that stuff coming down the pike. And I can just remember sitting around the, you know, dinner table in April of 2020 and just being like, thank God that we started this a year ago. Because I mean, we were watching other families just scramble and have to make these decisions and like, and then over the coming two years, just like constantly having to to fight all this stuff. And so I've been a little bit insulated from it. And I, I haven't had to.
Children have too.
Yeah.
Truly.
I haven't had to kind of dive into the fight, but I can totally see where you and everyone else is coming from because it's like, well, that's, that's a very, very real thing. And homeschooling isn't an option for a lot of families either. And so someone's gotta be, someone's gotta be standing up for them, too.
Well, and that's the other thing. So one of the other things that I did not discuss is I do love the kids of Armstrong School District. And that's not me, that's not a, you know.
Like a platypus or something?
Yeah, it's, it's not me trying to garner votes here. And this, I am also a volunteer, as I mentioned. I, I spend a lot of my time volunteering for the children in this community because they, they really are the future of not only Armstrong County, but the world. So we, we really have to stay involved in these little kids' lives and just see them through.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a responsibility of ours, for sure.
Well, that's maybe a good segue. I try to, I try to keep it positive, like you said, but we're gonna definitely talk about problems and opportunities. But I want to start with, you know, Armstrong School District as a whole. You're, well, first tell us what, what's District Three? I know you have that.
Oh, so Region Three. Yeah, so this is one of the only things I wrote down. Full disclosure here, as he mentioned, I am not reading off papers, but Atwood, Boggs, Dayton, Cowashanock, Elderton, Kataning Township, Pine, Plumcrick, Rural Valley, Smitsburg, South Bend Township, Valley, Wayne, and West Mahoning. This is all Region Three. So we have different regions in this school district. This is a very large district.
Oh, yeah.
So you have, you know, several elementary schools. And then you have the two big junior, senior high schools. So Armstrong Junior Senior High, Junior Senior High School and West Shamoken, of course.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. If people are in your, in that region, obviously, you should definitely be listening to this or share it with people that, that are in that region. And if you're not from that region, you still want to be listening because these are the issues that are gonna differentiate between candidates. And you might hear something and be like, wait a second. I didn't realize that that's what was going on.
Right.
I need to make sure I know what my candidates think. And so, so however, wherever you are in Armstrong School District, like, these are the things you need to be thinking about. So. But, okay, so back to the thing.
Yes, no, I love that.
What's the, what are the things that you love about Armstrong School District? Like, why do you, why do you care whether it, whether, what about its future?
That's a great question. What I love about Armstrong School District is I have to say, first I'm gonna, first I'm gonna go to the staff. The staff for my specific little elementary school, and then of course, beyond that, I have plenty of friends that work in the district. They're fantastic people outside of what they do professionally. So I do really appreciate them as educators. And I know they're doing the, the very best job that they can with the tools that they have.
Right.
And the second thing I love about Armstrong School District of, is of course, the children. I mean, I feel like we have a very large group of kids and we have a true opportunity to make a difference in these, these young lives. And I think we should take advantage of that.
Totally agree with both of those things. Do you feel, so you obviously have talked to a bunch, a lot of the educators. This, we didn't talk about this question at all, but I, I'm just interested in, in where, what you think about it. Do you feel like there's a big disconnect between like the, the, the school district from administrative level and the educators that are actually spending the time with the kids?
Absolutely. So this is kind of where I think I put out a statement in the Leader Times actually on this is the individuals kind of making decisions, which is the board, you're specifically referencing the administration.
Sure.
Absolutely. I mean, administration, first off, I would like to start out by, this is, they're great, great individuals, but we only have so many of them. And they're, their hands are kind of tied in a lot of ways, too.
Sure.
So there is a disconnect. That is abundantly apparent. We come from a small elementary school. We don't have any administration in our building. I don't think we necessarily need them in our building, but if we do need something, so for instance, there was a day, I want to say a few weeks ago where the, you know, Western Pennsylvania, we were getting all of these calls for the, it was incident of violence, but they were just random calls. Do you remember that? It was all over the news.
With that, like their random nine one one calls of bomb threats and stuff like that.
We get this, this call. And of course, none of us have any idea what's going on. And it's an automated call and they're telling us that, you know, there's gonna be an increased police presence. But then you call up to the school and they're like, we have no idea what you're talking about. So it's just kind of a call put out. And it, it sounded great. And thankfully, it was an empty threat. But there's certainly a disconnect, I would say, between the staff, administration, and ultimately, the board.
Right, okay. So, because I, I, I know several and I, I feel that disconnect as well. But I, you know, sometimes I kind of get locked in my own little echo chamber. So I was just curious, what are the other, what are the other teachers and things thinking? But so that's what you love about the district, obviously, which are the most important things, the teachers and the kids. What do, what do you see as the biggest problems or like the opportunities that, you know, if you would get in that you, that you'd like to work on?
So over the last few years, I'll start again with COVID really, it shined a lot of light on some areas we may have been lacking in before, but we are definitely really behind it now. So from an educational perspective, it is fact that our kids did lose a significant amount of time of in-person learning. And we're seeing devastating consequences of that now. The district, many districts received ESSR funds. So these would have been emergency relief funds from the government, essentially. And these funds were to be dispersed for, you know, needs that would have been needs on behalf of the student for like mental health issues or any educational opportunities that they would have missed. But I'm not sure any amount of money in the world could catch kids up two years educationally.
Right.
So we've invested these things into different, so some technology, Chromebooks, things like that, a few mental health professionals and and some software to kind of help kids learn. But I, I see this as a problem. I, I do see this as a problem and I'll be very forthcoming with that. I think in this, this country, and especially this county, but I'll say it as a country, we are faced, our kids are in the middle of something they should never be in the middle of. No matter which side you're on politically, the politicization of our school system is, is becoming almost disgusting. So I see this as a problem and I see this affecting the mental health of students. And now I'm starting to see it cut into the the curriculum and their actual learning time. And I think that really bothers me as a, as a parent who just wants their child to get an education. And also as a taxpayer. No matter which side you fall on, left, right, in the middle, our job is, our job is to send our children to school, which we all do, and their job there is to kind of get an education. But our educators can't do that if they're not afforded the tools. Or if they're being forced to teach something they don't necessarily want to teach.
Yeah. I, that's, I think that's what originally drove our, our homeschool decision actually was like, okay, it felt like instead of just learning how to, how to read and write and mathematics, like, it was like turning into an indoctrination factory across the nation. And I don't, I don't feel like that was necessarily a huge issue in Armstrong School District when we were making the decision. But we were seeing it happen on a national level. And it's like, well, whatever happens there generally trickles down.
Does trickle down.
Even if it's ten or twenty years behind, like, well, it's gonna come eventually. And I'd rather, I'd rather teach my kids just how to think.
Right.
And if they know how to think, then they can figure the rest out.
That is so important, too. It, it's incredibly important. I mean, that, that's the whole point. I mean, what happens to these kids when we let them loose out of their twelve years of, of an education? But, you know, we have these, we had something called a strategic planning committee. And it was basically where you wanted to see these kids when they were graduating. The, there were certain pillars of a successful learner. And, but what bothered me about this type of situation is when they started talking about seeing the, the pillars of a successful learner, because they're trying to build you up on, and on how we can create these kids that we all want to see. So the district does do a nice job in terms of trying to have the tools to get the kids where they need to be. But we're just not there somehow. And this is kind of where the breakdown comes in. So we have these, there's a very, there's like one flyer sent home and a QR code where you could scan into a meeting and you could all talk about a successful learner. And I believe there were one or two meetings. And you came up with pillars of a learner and what you, you wanted to see come out of this. So there was definitely a breakdown. I'll come back, or I'll circle back to your, your previous statement of do you see a, a disconnect from administration? And staff, I'll actually take it as far as saying there's a disconnect between administration and parents. I mean, I had no idea about, you know, some of the resources that were even out there that were able to be utilized to either catch my child up on an education or even talk about like a strategic planning type situation of, of a successful learner. So basically, you want this to be a pillar of our educational foundation, but yet the community is not involved.
Right.
So that became problematic. And I see little things like this all the time. I mean, we've implemented different resources, as I've mentioned, to kind of compensate for those two years, like iXL, which is a great resource. And, but once again, we, we weren't aware of iXL until this year. And then there was a big push and there are now tutoring services, which actually none of us knew about until a few months ago. So.
Yeah. And you're, and you're relatively involved.
I'm, I would say I'm pretty involved.
So then, what hope does anyone else have? Do you think, I, I'm just gonna kind of circle back on the things that we talked about and go a little bit deeper. So when we talk about learning, catch up and emergency funds and those kinds of things, I, in my own mind, I'm like, okay, it, there's two things. Can we work as hard as we can to try to catch up from the two years, which I'm not sure is gonna be possible for a lot of people? Or is it more of like, I want to get on there to just make sure that if this ever happens again, then we will never participate in anything like that again? To make sure, like, where, where are you kind of at with it?
That is where I am. So I will fall in the second school of thought is I, I cannot promise that we can make up for two years of lost time. I cannot. I, I mean, that is something that was beyond me and I can't do that. But what I can say is that I will never go along to, to get along essentially again, and at the expense of our children.
Right.
Or the expense of our staff. A lot of those staff members wanted to be teaching those kids. They love the kids just as much as we love our kids in many of these instances.
Yeah.
So, and now the hurdles they're facing, just as, as teachers, behaviorally, or, you know, even from an educational aspect, trying to teach these kids, it's a tremendous burden on them. So what I can tell you is that if I see something coming down the pipeline, which, you know, I've identified something, not just me, I belong to this local grassroots movement, it's called the PLCEA. Chapter forty-nine has become a, a big deal. And that's a culturally relevant sustained education. And you are welcome to look into this. But no matter how you feel, once again, it kind of tells you how to believe. Not kind of, there are certain statements in there that force educators especially, this is a program essentially for educators in training in-house programs on the induction, that's their terminology, not mine, from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. It's an induction program into a, a thought process, basically, of.
Culturally relevant sustained education.
Yeah. So I, I kind of circled a few things here. And this is kind of where I'll just, I'll read three brief statements and then you could take it how you wish. But I definitely encourage everybody listening this, to this, to, to take a look at chapter forty-nine. And it's implemented here at Armstrong School District. It's actually on page twenty-six of the comprehensive plan. But full disclosure, the district was forced by legis, this passed the legislative process, April twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two in the state of Pennsylvania. So they were forced by the legislature to kind of put this in their comprehensive plan. But the implementation is not necessary. This is where local control becomes incredibly important, right?
Okay.
So here we are. We're gonna read these three statements. So these are competencies that your educators basically have to be competent in. And you're going to sit through these six days, eight hour days on this culturally relevant sustained education. Mind you, who's, who's paying for this? Who do you think, Andrew?
Uh, we are.
Yeah. So no matter how you feel about this, I'm gonna read this. You basically have to know and acknowledge that biases exist in the educational system. Okay, fine. Sure. We can, that's fine.
Okay.
Identify literature and professional learning opportunities for themselves to understand more about the manifestations of racism and other biases at at institutional and structural levels that can result in disadvantaging some groups of learners, educators, educational leaders and families while privileging others. This is the one that kind of bothers me the most. Disrupt harmful institutional practices, policies and norms by advocating and engaging in efforts to re-rate policies, change practices and practice awareness. What does that even mean? I mean, that is so vague.
That's a core competency for our teachers?
Yes, that's a core competency for the C R S E training.
That's unreal. Okay.
Yeah. So this is, there are, I want to see six competencies. We can, oh, so here, this one. It's a competency, you must believe that every family, regardless of their race, skin color, color, ethnicity, gender, identity, age, national nationality, language, class, economic status, ability, level of education, sexual orientation and religion wants the best for their children. Once we start telling other individuals how to believe, I'm not saying we all don't believe that we want the best for our children.
Right.
But we cannot tell others how to believe. So this isn't for me to sit here and talk about. This is already in litigation. But what I'll say is this, I've seen this. I've personally seen this in the comprehensive plan. It's in litigation. It's at the taxpayers' expense at this point. And I'm hoping that Armstrong School District will go ahead and cease or halt any training on this in the future, so that we're not wasting our educators' time or our kids' time. Because judicially, I'm not sure how this will pan out, but I would assume if the P A G O P attorney, Mr. Tom King, has taken this up, that it will probably not pan out well for the state. So I would like to utilize local control, once again, on the implementation and kind of keep the tax dollars at bay and see if we actually, this is something we actually have to do. And this is just one example. I mean, I'm not a single issue candidate. No matter how you feel about these things, there, there will always be things down the pike like this. And our job locally is to ensure that we do what's in the best interest of the kids, the staff and the taxpayers, period.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I just don't, I'm trying to hold back a little bit because I don't, I don't want to inject too much of my opinion into it, but it's just like, okay, so what is actually going to use the, the finite amount of money that we have in the best way to make sure that our kids have the best education possible, that they leave knowing how to think and knowing how to learn?
So even if it died, I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
I'm just not sure how that would ever benefit to that process.
I'm not either. So I'm not really sure how that, you know, translates to learning the, the fundamentals in any way.
Yeah.
That, that's all we can really say about it is, these are the things that, where I talk about the polit, politicization of our children and our schools, we, we need to keep this at bay, no matter how you feel about the content.
Right.
It's incredibly important to oversee funds that have been secured. We need to make sure they're making it to the kids and not to things like this, that they're not misappropriated to things like this. And that we're using them to better our children. So I, I'll go back to the question. I can't fix what's happened in the last two years. But I can promise you that I'll do my best to keep things like this from clouding our entire goal as a school district.
Yeah. And that, I guess that's my, my whole problem with just identity politics in general is like, okay, if we're, if we're going to teach our kids that their identity, I don't know, that their identity, everything needs to be framed around that rather than, okay, what is my higher purpose in being here today? My higher purpose here is to, to learn and all that kind of stuff. Yeah, I'm different than all my people. I'm, I'm, or different from all the other people. I'm unique to every individual in the class. That's all true. But we're all here for the same purpose. We're, we're trying to come together for higher learning. And so when we kind of place identity above higher, above the, the, the reason that we're here, it just creates all
A mess.
Messiness.
It's very messy.
Doesn't even belong in schools at all.
No.
In my opinion, but.
No, I, I, I agree.
Okay. So we talked a little bit about the emergency funds, learning, catch up, curriculum, pillars of learning. Tell me a little bit more about that. Like, how did, how did that stuff come about? And what, what were you hearing in those conversations that, like, was it, was it this kind of stuff that you were?
So this, the pillars of learning was, I believe it was part of a strategic planning committee, which their purpose was to create a committee and engage the community to try to bridge maybe a, a gap. You know, it sounded, it might have sounded great, but it was to bridge a gap between the community and the school in general. And find out what the community would like to see in a successful learner in the ASD system. So those pillars, while I can't speak to what they are, I can say that I'm just going back to the meeting of the Brit, the, the enormous gap of even knowing this
Right.
existed. So I mean, I did show up to the meeting virtually. It was a virtual meeting. And I think that was one of the only times I had spoke with anybody in administration regarding, you know, education.
Yeah.
Which was crazy to me. Which was crazy to me. You know, what I would like to see, we actually, we were able to look at ELA scores, so. These are your your anguish, your English Language Arts, I'm sorry here. A little goofy, um Eng- English Language Arts, we were able to look at the ELA scores, we were able to look at the math, science scores, those things. And what we were able to see was that the ELA scores were were pretty, we were doing pretty well as a district. Um but from the math perspective, we weren't doing well at all. Um and some questions were kind of coming out of parents that you, they were educators themselves, so it was beyond me, of course, I'm not an educator, but. Um on why we couldn't, you know, hire another individual to to or multiple individuals to kind of. Implement different practices so that we could catch our kids up. It was abundantly apparent apparent where they were deficient and um there were just no great answers, so. I will go back again to um. The gap that that is inherently there, um and the distrust. I mean, I think we should talk about the distrust too. Now, I myself have kind of bridged my own gap and made my own relationships. With the district or administrators. But there is definitely distrust even nationally with the public school system and parents in general.
Yeah, no doubt.
So uh once again, I really, these are one of my driving factors as well. Um I would love to to bridge that gap. I want to be. A good community ma- uh a great community member, which I strive to do. And I would like to bring that to the board as well. I would. I want to carry that over and I want people to trust. We shop in the same grocery stores, guys. We uh we live in the same areas. I don't like seeing such great disdain for a small area when we, we can fix these things.
So we talked, you've mentioned uh quite a few times now, like that local control is really important, um that kind of thing. When something like this comes down from the state, from a legislative level, like what what does local control look like? Is it just like, hey? We'll acknowledge that this is here, but we just won't implement it. Or is it, or is it, hey, we need to be the ones to be pushing back and lead the fight against um trying to turn this thing around?
Great question. So local control can look a few different ways. So we can talk about, let's talk about this specific example first, okay? Cuz it it's going to be different in all situations, but in this specific example, um it came down to just. What could you do without getting involved in the frontline fight? Well, implementation, I mean, implementation, it could have been handled very loosely. Um and you had some time, you had some wiggle room and now um since there are several school districts who have taken a much more. Um challenging approach and they've actually signed on to this lawsuit against the state. That's not something we're we're looking to do here, um but I'm just saying that the implementation could have been very loose. Or drawn out a little bit more. To see how this played out before we misappropriate, I will call it misappropriation, because I think it's frivolous to spend taxpayer money on. Something most of Armstrong County would likely not agree with and would not want their children taught. Or their educators taught, their the educators don't wanna sit through this either. I mean, it's. We shouldn't ask these people to even sit through this. So I'll go back to that being frivolous. We we should definitely refrain from spending our funds and.
Yep, okay, I mean, I to- totally agree with you. Um I'm not allowed to be biased, you know, as an interviewer. But it bleeds through. All right, so uh so give me. Well, first off, is there any other topics that you wanted to talk about specifically, things that that you're really um really passionate about? I think we we've done a pretty good job going through a lot of them. I just wanna make sure we didn't miss anything that you wanted to mention.
You know, I think the only thing I will say is. We've just discussed the negative or some some problems in the district and the only thing I want to outline is. Keep in mind when you're watching this, that we we talked about positives and we can always do better. Just because we are talking about some things that are wrong and they're happening nationally too and they're a- absolutely happening locally. We can make it better. So we do have good people in there now. We we have made some great financial decisions. There is some fiscal responsibility. On the board now, um so I I would kind of like to say it's not, we're not in a terrible position.
Yeah, I don't think we're in like torches and pitchfork territory.
But look, things coming down the pipeline, we need strong leadership. And the other thing becomes. When we talked about interests before. This is um probably going to be unpopular, but. The interests need to remain um very pure in nature. So um if you have interests of. You know, for instance. Family working in the district or or anything like that and you're sitting on a board and you're trying to make decisions on local control, it becomes difficult. Because um you know, you have some uh either a spouse or a family member employed by the district, it becomes difficult to make. Clear unbiased decisions. When you maybe, when you maybe have a few hands in the pot there, so. My intentions are pure and I truly am just running on being a mother of. Two children and loving the community, so I don't have any other vested interest.
Um so give me a like, let's say you get elected, how, I don't even, I don't even know how, is it a two-year term on a school board or do you get longer than that? Four year, okay, and then how do the seats go? Is it, do they all go every four years?
Every two years they alternate. So this position I'm taking, it's one single position, um. And in two years, there will be two seats up in region three.
Okay, so give me an idea, four years from now, everything goes the way that you would like it to go. What how was the, how would the district look different because you're on the board?
Well, I would like it to reflect what the community wants it to be. Um I would like to once again bridge the gap. I'd like to. Have town halls um. With a few members, either a few members of the board or um not just a board meeting, because you can't just show up and start speaking there. But I would like to do these like kind of breakout little sessions, maybe once a quarter. And talk to the constituents of the district and I want it, I want to shape it exactly how the majority wants it shaped. Because I think that's what needs to happen. So you're asking me in four years what I would like to see. Well, I'm not sure. I know what I would like to see, but it doesn't quite matter what I would like to see. I would like to see what my constituents would like to see.
Yeah, okay. So you'd like to have your constituency more involved in the process?
Absolutely. I think I think that would build um public trust back with the the public school. Um I think it would start bridging gaps. I think this is the only solution to the problems that we, some of the problems we discussed. We need to get out there, we need to talk to people, we need to um make our efforts like this strategic planning. That was really haphazardly sadly kind of put together and out there for the community. We need to make it abundantly apparent. Look, on this day, we're all gonna be talking. Bring sure, is it a town hall of sorts? Are you gonna hear a bunch of complaints? Probably, absolutely, but bring them. Let's talk about them. There are always solutions. There's always in a middle ground and I I would love to see that in four years, just public trust again. In the in the institution itself.
And you, I think that's a lot of what happened, what's happened nat- nationally is like you have, the school board keeps doing things, but then the public isn't getting involved. But they they're seeing it happen, but they're just getting more and more angry. And so like the tensions just continue to rise until it becomes explosive. But I bet if you had a, every region had a meeting and there was teachers there and maybe a couple administrators there and. School board member and then you invited the public and they could ask questions and everyone could give their.
Just transparency.
Have those conversations, it just lowers the animosity and then. I I would think as a school board member too, if you left from there and you knew, hey, everyone here agreed with this thing. And I can push back now knowing that, not, I'm not, I'm not an island. I can make a.
It's in good faith at that point.
I think it's really cool. So final pitch to the voters, give your two minutes, why why they vote for you?
Well, I will ask for your vote, um because I wanna do the right thing by you. No matter how you feel, no matter which side you're on, I think we can all agree that we're living in maybe some uncharted times. And I wanna work together. Um I don't, I don't like seeing this great divide, especially amongst our children. Uh we do not want to carry this on to future generations. It can end here. We can make it end here. We can all respect one another, work together and bridge these gaps and um. Make this district what we want it to be.
Love it. Uh if someone wants to get ahold of you, if they have more questions based on what we talked about, what's the best way for them to get in touch right now?
Uh please go ahead and email me. Well, I do have a platform on Facebook, um but I'm happy to give an email too. I won't do personal cell phone numbers, just for many reasons. Um but I do have a Facebook platform and um so as a as an unpaid position. It gets a little dicey. You you see some some road signs and stuff here or there. This is why I really appreciated this platform. But I do have a Facebook group, um it's Ashley McIntyre for Region Three School Board A S D, something to that effect, you'll find it for sure. And once again, if you're in any of the following areas, Atwood, Boggs, Dayton, Cowashenak, Elderton. Kitanning, Pine, Plumcrick, Rural Valley, Smitsburg, South Bend, Valley, Wayne or Wes Mahoning. Please get on, even if you're not in those areas, jump on, take a look at the conversation. I have some polls, I'm very interactive in that group, or I try to be. Um you're welcome to find me there, where and I'll send you a message, much like you and I were in in contact. Or um I have a personal email if you're not comfortable reaching out on that platform. It's A McIntyre, A M C I N T Y R E. Eleven twelve at gmail dot com. Uh send me an email. Let's talk.
Absolutely, yeah. I'll put the link to her Facebook in the description. I can attest that I put a comment in there and it was like twenty minutes later. She was like. Yeah, let's do an interview, so uh it worked really well. And then I'll put your email address in the in the description of the video as well. So if you guys wanna get in con- contact with Ashley, it'd be um, I think that would be great. Let's uh continue to have the conversations.
I would love that and I would just like to add one more thing. You know, no matter what goes on on May sixteenth, which is election day. And it's municipal, so this is a smaller election, you don't get as great of a turnout, et cetera. I want to, and this is not just as a school board candidate, I implore you. And I, this is a goal and a focus of mine in general. No matter who you're going to vote for, know everything about them as much as you can. Don't fill out a bubble blindly, ever. Ever. Please go in there informed, um there are sample ballots on the county website. Go in there, take a look at who's on that ballot, do your research, and if you know nothing about them, leave the box empty. Vote. Vote early. Vote whenever you can, but don't blindly vote ever, please, on anything. Because I think that's what got us in a lot of the mess we're in now, so.
Good advice, very good. Um I really appreciate this. I I learned a lot. I'm I'm much more in tune with the county politics and you know, local borough politics. I'm much, much more removed from the school district stuff, so. I appreciate your insight as well and uh really enjoyed the time getting to know you. Wish you the best of luck in the election and I think that's it for this one, guys. Uh get in contact with Ashley. If you're not in her region, make sure you get to know who who is in your region. It's incredibly incredibly important for the future of our area and for our children.
Absolutely, and thank you so much for this time, Andrew. It's been a great platform and um I love what you're doing for the community, so thank you.
Very cool. Well, bless you guys. Have a great uh rest of your day and we'll see you in the next one.